To put their phones on airplane mode, so as to not interfere with our microphones up here.
Especially if you come up there and speak at the mic, please leave your phone or either, don't have it, it interferes, you can't hear on the internet.
Yeah, we don't hear anything, so, alright, first thing I would like to, do we have any additions, deletions to the agenda?
We do have some additions, I believe.
We had to add the two new tires for the sheriff's department.
Okay, that's it? Okay, can I get a motion to add the additions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the added additions.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Alright, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? If everybody's had time to look over it.
So moved.
Any discussion?
That we already had.
Well, we did it with, so we did.
Yeah.
With the additions, okay.
We've done it with additions.
Alright, can I get a, has everybody time to read over the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for August the 27th, 2019. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Everybody had time to look over the bills? Can I get a motion to approve the bills?
I make a motion, we pay the bills?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Alright, we're at the public comments portion of Ms. Carol Fortuna with Chilton County United Way. Welcome, thank you for coming out. Sorry about it being 110 degrees in here.
I just want to give you a quick update of United Way, Chilton County United Way, where we are, what we're doing this year, and then ask for permission for payroll deduction for the county employees if they choose to. Our 2020 campaign this year, we've kept our goal at 175,000. It's getting harder and harder to raise money with all the 5O Cs that are, have sprung up here in Chilton County, so we find that that's about the most that we can, we're able to raise. If you open your brochure on the far right-hand side, all of the agencies are the same this year, except for one new one. We did add West End Neighborhood Watch Youth Program. This is a homework mentorship program for the youth in that neighborhood. The first sign that youth is going downhill usually starts with their grades dropping, so they're trying to come in and help the youth get their grades up by homework mentorship, and so that they can graduate and be a productive citizen here in Chilton County.
I was Lee Breckin, I got one of those.
You did? Really?
Yeah, we got them.
Oh yeah. Somebody didn't do a good job.
Haven't made.
We have a new discount card, it just started September the 1st. It's good a whole year until August 30th of 1920. We've added, we listened to people, we've added two businesses from Maplesville, two from Jimison, two from Thorsby, and the rest from Clanton to accommodate people that live in different areas in Chilton County. We asked the commissioners that if you would like, we have a pledge card you can fill out on the back. And we also, United Way started 211 in 1999. 211 is a call center for the whole state of Alabama. Alabama was the fourth state in the United States to take it online. This is, if you run across anyone that needs help with child and family services, food assistance, utilities, housing services, education, training services, health, mental health, disaster relief and recovery, whatever their problem issue is, tell them to call 211, it's the call center, and they will refer them to the correct agency that can help them. So if someone from Chilton County calls, they know what's here in Chilton County that can help these with whatever issue they have. So we're giving out these, and we're trying to get the word out, because a lot of people don't know about 211. So we want to spread the word about that, it's a good thing. So that's about all the update I have, but we do seek permission for payroll deduction for county employees if they so choose.
We've done that last year too, correct?
Right.
I thought we did, yes.
Yes, you did approve it.
And also, I was gonna tell you that 211, make sure the sheriff's got that information, a lot of times they get a call with people that's homeless, and we don't have a homeless shelter here, and for stuff like that, so that's, that's great, that is awesome. We needed that, I'm telling you, that's been, how long's that been effective?
Since, it started in 1999, I'm a member of all the United Ways in the state of Alabama. And we have, our board came up with this.
This recently, or 211?
Mm-hmm, they came up with it.
Okay.
Becky Booker, who is in charge of the United Ways of Alabama, we have board meetings four times a year, she is the director over the 211.
That's good to know, we need that information.
Yes, we do.
Thank you ma'am.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we allow her to talk to our employees at their discretion to donate to the Humane, uh, United Way.
United Way.
Sorry.
In a discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Enjoy your cards.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you ma'am.
Hey ma'am, ma'am. Put some money in before you give it back.
Alright, Courtney Ash and Ryan Smith with Aflac, up next. Thank y'all for coming out.
Good evening, I am Courtney Pierce Ash, and I am an associate with Aflac here in my hometown of Chilton County. This is my district coordinator, Mr. Ryan Smith, and we thank you for letting us present to you tonight. We have several services and benefits that we think will be wonderful for our county, and now I will turn it over to Ryan.
Appreciate y'all having us this evening. Biggest thing we want to discuss is Aflac, and then the services that Aflac can offer your county, to your employees of the county. First thing I want to talk about is Aflac as a whole, supporting 150 company. It's created in 1955 in Enterprise, Alabama, it's headquartered in Columbus, Georgia. What Aflac is, is a supplemental insurance company. It's not health insurance, it's not, you know, gap insurance, it's supplemental insurance on the back end of, on the bottom of your health insurance package that you offer your employees. The things that we do well is service. You know, some of the competitors or things like that, they're not service oriented. We have a service called One Day Pay. When somebody files a claim on their insurance, within 48 hours, we process the claim and pay the claim, okay? With Courtney being a local agent, that is 100% huge benefit for you guys, do business locally, and, you know, to have the service for your employees that they deserve. We've worked directly with Mr. Terry Hinton to get this appointment, and get this meeting, and he has expressed interest in one of the services that Aflac has to offer your county. That service is called Employee Navigator. Miss Courtney, give all of you this little flyer that talks about Employee Navigator. What it is, is an HR administration housing agent, okay? We're talking about HR benefits, okay, and HR deductions, payroll deductions. Y'all just, y'all are gonna hire some people at the jail, and so if somebody has to go in and input that data, somebody has to take those other people out and make payroll adjustments, okay? That's what this system is for. The things that this system does well is centralize your HR benefits, okay? It listed on the sheet right here, but I'm just gonna give you a, an overview of what it does. It streamlines benefits. What's that mean? That means we come in, we do an open enrollment, y'all just completed one, we do an open enrollment, we see all of your employees. The employee's data that we input in this system correlates directly into the system that you're using now. To my understanding, Mr. Terry, y'all are bringing HR and payroll benefits back in-house, that's my understanding, I could be a little off by that, but I think Mr. Terry told me that, and this would help greatly with that. I don't know if anybody in this room's ever done HR, or been in the payroll seat where you have to do payroll and put deductions in, it's a lot, okay? There's a lot of employees that y'all have with the county, and this is a system that can correlate directly over, so it's not like we were doing an open enrollment and then give him a bunch of numbers to punch in, we would do all of this information for him, okay? When we sit down with it, each person, put their information in, it correlates directly over to them. It improves employee communication, so employees that are in the field working, that you ask to complete a job, they're not thinking about their health benefits until something happens, okay? They're not thinking about it at all, they're just thinking about, hey, I gotta get up at 7 o'clock, I gotta be at work, and I get off at 3:30. That's kinda what they're thinking about, so this system gives them easy use on their phone. You pull up your Employee Navigator app on your phone, you can view all your health benefits on your phone, not just Aflac. You can view your Blue Cross, your Mutual of Omaha, whatever else y'all have, that y'all offer with the county, it'll house everything, and they can view it all at one time. They can see their deductions that they have for their benefits, all on an app, okay? So that's a very good service there. Online employee direct services, this is something that some people choose to use, some people do not. In some situations, you have a formal open enrollment, where you have agents come in, see everyone, do a lot of education, and then we're out the door, and everybody goes about their day-to-day lives the way they are. During open enrollment, using this system, employees can make changes directly on their app during open enrollment without seeing an agent, okay? Without contacting Blue Cross, without doing any of that. It would update it in Employee Navigator, correlate directly over to your HR system, and you make the changes that way. Minimizes the work that Mr. Terry has to do on the back end, and, you know, it's a very, very good system. It modernizes HR, so if you go in an HR office, there's a bunch of filing cabinets, right? A bunch of papers, we filed a claim, we had this, we had that, and there's a bunch of papers in there, okay? This can house all paperwork, it can back up all documents. Is that, you have access to it, anybody that is given access to it has access to it, and has control over it, so any changes that need to be made, it's built for you, okay? How is it built? One of our IT guys at Aflac, and an IT guy for Chilton County will sit down, and they will build this system for you. It will not say Aflac, it will not say Employee Navigator, it will say Chilton County Commission. And it will be built for you, and it will be branded for you. You know, the biggest thing that I can say is, it's an awesome system. Over 4 million people are on this system right now. Employee Navigator services 35,000 companies across the US, okay? So it's a wonderful company, and it's not going anywhere anytime soon, and neither is Aflac. How do you get to use this benefit? Allow Aflac in your county, allow your employees of your county to have access to Aflac in some capacity. Again, I say that, and I want to be kinda clear, that we're not here just to promote Aflac. Aflac is part of the deal, Aflac is a Fortune 150 company, has the money to do a lot of things and help a lot of the accounts that we have, but in order to put this system in, Aflac has to be offered to your employees. That's kinda what I got.
Alright. The, I think the biggest issue here is, we're not very far into just changing over to fidelity?
Yeah.
And you just, a lot of this is timing.
Right.
And you're just a little bit off, you know, six months, you know, or so off with this timing on this, if I'm not mistaken, so I would say that we need to get you, and them, and whoever else wants to come back and present all at once later on. But as of right now, I think we're kinda good where we're at, but, you know, I'm up for discussion if y'all think this is better, so.
One thing. In, I've met with Mr. Terry like three times, okay? And he. I have not. Who do I need?
This is our administrator, Ms. Sylvia Singleton.
Have not. Talked with Terry three times, lunch, meetings, things like that, and he's expressed the HR benefits, the HR difficulties, that he's kinda facing going in and putting everything in manually. So when I brought this up to him, he was like, you need to get in front of the, you know, the board immediately. And so, his thing to me was, is this system. You know, Aflac, yeah, great, but this system would help tremendously, because just like the people that you're replacing at the jail, he's got to go in, cancel all that out, add new people, put all their stuff in there, allow them time to get put on their health insurance and all the other benefits that the county offers them, and has to manually put that in, and then manually do payroll deductions. This system would kinda take that step away, and it's all for two.
Mr. Vice Chair, let me make a recommendation, let's, let's table this, and not make any action on it tonight.
That's what I was gonna say, our standard resolution is we can't.
And the standard resolution, we have to have it in a work session anyhow.
Okay.
We couldn't vote on it tonight, so we could table this and, and reach out to our administrator and our HR, Mr. Terry, because this is the first we've heard of it, so, you know. And like I said, we have a standard resolution, unless we submerge it, we don't vote on anything that we have not had prior, previously in our work sessions.
Yeah, it sounds like a great plan, but like I said, we just need to discuss it more, so.
And he has your contact information, I'm sure?
Terry does, or Sylvia?
Terry, Mr. Terry does, but I will get with her after.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, is Ms. Kelly Jordan here? Come on up, Kelly.
How are you?
Hey, I'm good.
I'm good.
How you doing, Ms. Jordan?
Thank you for coming, tell us what's on your mind.
I wanna see if y'all can possibly help get our road fixed. It's like, really, really, really bad. And they, they came in and they put a new bridge, and we were under the understanding that they were gonna, because it's hills on both sides of the bridge, so we were under the understanding that they were gonna gravel and tar on both sides of the hill, because basically when it rains, all the dirt and stuff from both sides of the hill washes down into the river. And it's, it's really bad when it rains, I mean, I brought pictures so I can show you, two cars can't pass without bottoming out, I mean, I've ripped the muffler off my car, but just trying to, a car was coming, and you have to go on the side, and it scrubs.
So this is dirt?
It is a dirt road.
Okay.
But, and they come out, and they grade it, but they graded it so.
Can I see your pictures?
What's your road number?
199. This is the one we just put the bridge in, is that right, correct, Tony?
No, this bridge was put in about eight or nine years ago.
Oh, okay, I thought it was the one we just, okay. You said you was under the understanding they were going to. I'll just shift the wrong down. Do you remember who told you, who told you that?
Um, Bruce Burnett told me that. I wasn't there, didn't talk to an official, I wasn't actually living there at the time when they did the bridge. I didn't buy my property until 2014.
I understand.
Did you buy it from Bruce Barnett?
I'm sorry, what?
I said, did you buy your property from Bruce?
No.
So I think the biggest issue here is, obviously, it's, it's funds on our end, and we barely can pave or patch the roads that are paved right now. I know that doesn't help your feelings at all, but I'm being very honest with you.
Well, we've, the, the community has spent thousands, and when I say thousands, I mean thousand, thousands of dollars, getting it dug out when they let the water down, because it's washed in so much, you can't even get a boat out. So the people that live there, that have boats.
What do you mean dug out?
We had to have big track hoes and stuff brought in, and army dump trucks brought in, and dig it out and haul it out, because you can't get in there, you can't.
Wait a minute now, when was this done?
This was just on last year, this, well, actually, when they had the water down.
So the, the community itself?
This is the third time the community's had to do that.
On the county dirt road, is this non-maintained?
No, they're on, she's gonna not get into the sloughs.
Right, in the slough.
That's whatever.
Oh, I thought you was talking about the dirt road, I was like, oh, I thought you was talking about digging the dirt road out and hauling the dirt out. Okay, I'm sorry.
Have you done a work order with the engineer?
That's, that's our first step, is, is to get with our engineer, and, and see what he can help you with, and is that something you think you can help us out with, Tony?
Sorry.
At least go look at it.
For my ignorance, but where is County Road 199 from here?
Looks like it's solid rock.
Flatland?
Yeah, yeah.
That helps out a lot.
Lay Lake, that's all I know, I've only lived there for, I haven't lived there long, but I, I was building my house and.
So how'd you draw the short straw and get to come here?
I have no clue.
Just to be honest, I mean.
I don't know why.
How many houses on that, you know, is there a lot of houses on the, on?
Yeah, there's a lot, and that's another problem, is because people are selling, and so many people haven't, I used to never pass anybody, but now every time I go in and out, you're passing people.
So is it, is it something that we can, Tony, that we could probably look at maintaining it somehow, a little better, or, or scraping, it looks like it's pretty hard, that's a little rocky down there.
It's rocky.
Yes.
Solid rock that you can't even wear.
We abased it, we put gravel on it, the hill there, especially when going to the bridge, it's solid rock, but honestly, it doesn't get enough traffic to keep it packed, so it's, right away, a lot of timber that's cut, matter of fact, they're back there now, logging, and so you deal with a lot of that, those issues.
Right.
But the base, we'll go in and rebase occasionally, but we're, like I said, we're putting solid rock on about a 45 degree hill.
Is there a school bus that goes travels that road?
A school bus, no.
I mean, we're, we're pretty limited, and our hands are pretty tied, based on funds in general, but we'll, we'll get our engineer to go look at it, and, you know, he'll do the best he can, but honestly, it's, there's not a lot to work with with that road, from the pictures I see.
Yeah, it is a bad road.
It's tough, I mean, it's not very wide, and our graders can't just go and widen it, so it's just not a lot to, but, but we'll check it out.
Well, the first thing is, call the commission office in the morning, and they'll do a work order, and then the foreman will come out and look at it, and then get back with Tony.
And do the best he can, we've got, so, we'll try.
Call the road department.
Yeah, the road department.
Who did I say?
I called the road department.
Oh, I meant, I meant road department, I didn't mean commission office.
Oh, you're gonna give them a work order?
No, you, you call, call the road department, and they will fill out a, you don't got it? Okay, so you're doing a work order for, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, we'll do best we can, and we don't make promises, but we'll, we'll try.
Okay.
It's just a, it's a tough spot, so.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for coming.
Alright, y'all have a good night.
You too.
Alright, we have sent out bids for all of our yearly items, and we literally just need to accept the, that we received the bids, not the individual bids, just a motion to accept the bids.
I make a motion to accept the bids.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, bids for.
It's in your list, so it's gonna be janitorial supplies, asphalt, diesel.
Yearly bids, or yearly bids? It's just that we received it now, we're not accepting it.
Yeah, just that we received it.
Do you not have to go through them, be it the name of my law, or you just accept them all?
We just accept that we're receiving them.
This wasn't a sealed bid open.
Yes, it was.
Now, we're gonna list them out at the next meeting, and we'll have everything.
Yeah, there was, there was a sealed bid open.
It was sealed, but we'll have it listed out at the next one, we're just, just literally accepting them at this one. Alright, any other questions?
I don't know if you can accept them bids without looking at envelopes, but they're supposed to have certain things on them, and all kinds of.
They're all verified in their office.
So you done verified them?
Yeah.
They would be open this afternoon, they were, and they're listed there, and they're in front of your book, and that's what we're asking you to accept.
Now, it's a little more clear.
Yeah, don't worry, Joe, I, I was, I was sidetracked too, not sidetracked, I just wouldn't understand anything about, I'm full, you know.
It's just different from what we normally do.
That's right, that's why I didn't. But anyhow, I second it, let's roll on it.
Alright, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Reposed? Unanimous. Alright, Tony, Department of report.
Thank you, sir. I'm here just to request, or submit our request for a resolution for a subdivision variance for Jackie Logan, exempting her from the construction of storm shelters for our Manicure and Home Park.
Very specifically, why into that?
Because West Frey, uh, I'm sorry, West Chilton Fire Department has a storm shelter, and these lots touch that fire department's property, and the storm shelter that's constructed at the fire department is right there.
So from these three lots, how far are we talking they have to go in, in bad weather to get to this storm shelter?
Less than 50 yards.
That's in the back, that's on the back deck. So, table it.
I make a motion, we table this, to review this some more.
We could go look at it, definitely go look at it.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Well, she's in the, she's in the process of bringing this before the, the engineer to go ahead and go the whole, go through the whole process to make it a certified trailer park.
Yeah, we've already voted on the preliminary plat for this, so.
We have voted on the plat for this?
The preliminary plat.
Yeah, preliminary.
She still has to submit the final, but yes, we voted on preliminary plat probably about three months ago.
It seems very redundant to have somebody build a tiny, if you have to do it in trailer parks, why, 10 by 10, or something very tiny? When you've got a, what is it, a 10 by 40, or?
100 people.
Yeah, I mean, within 50 yards, so, that's just my feeling on this situation, so, I know we try not to do variances.
The only point that just concerns me is, you know, some of this stuff's down Non- County Main Town Road, and we always try to make people bid in subdivision.
By the subdivision law?
Yeah. You know, and that might not be nothing wrong with that, but I, I just, seems like if you do it for one, you have to do it for a few more, that's just my thinking.
Again, I think we should table this and look into it.
Alright, we've got a motion and a second.
I'm just making the request.
To table it, alright, all in favor, signify by saying aye, tabling?
Alright.
Any opposed?
What about update?
Update on 37?
Oh, wow. The federal aid project to go through and patch 37 from Thorsby city limits to County Road 22 is complete. It got what I feel like was the majority of the bad spots through there, it now rides pretty good, it's not perfect, but it is done, and we're in the process of closing that project out.
And to add to that, Tony, I had a phone call from a lady from County Road 28, where we done that bad section of 28, just, and she wanted to know who was over the paving of the roads, and she actually sent me a message, so I asked her to call me, because I wasn't sure about the question, I didn't want to answer it too bad, and she was thanking us for doing that road and 37 over there, so, we don't get a lot of that, there's one for us, we'll probably get 10 negatives after this, but I'll take, I'll take that data boy every day.
Yeah, 37 is a lot better.
You won't get, you won't get many negatives from 37, I can tell you.
No, sir.
R28.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Judge Calhoun, do you have anything? Not on here, Tim's not here, Dick's not here, Sheriff?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Oh, tonight I would like to request a resolution to hire Christopher Robinson, hired as a full-time corrections officer to jail.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Next, I would like to ask for a resolution to hire Carlos Pierce, hired as a full-time corrections officer to jail.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
These, these positions are gonna be the ones where feeling people are leaving the jail, so. I would like to ask for a resolution to hire Kenneth Thornton, or excuse me, to have him reclassified as a full-time corrections officer from part-time.
So moved.
He'll be like, take place of Jacob Vorden.
All in favor, signify by saying aye? Next?
Okay, I would like to have Crystal Cullen-Frankway, hired as a part-time corrections officer.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
I would request a resolution to hire, have Hunter Hurst, hired as a part-time deputy.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Request a resolution to have Billy Fulmer reclassified as a part-time deputy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
For the last one, I'd like to have a 2015 Dodge 2500 approved for surplus, trade-in for half-ton pickup in order to save on fuel consumption, because that thing is awful on gas.
So moved.[1768.84]
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank y'all.
All right, Dan? Dan Wright, nine one one direct.
Good evening, Joe.
Good evening.
Uh, so tonight my request is for the county commission to sign a memorandum of agreement. This memorandum is being presented to the county commission, all four municipalities, and the Chilton County Board of Education. And the agreement sets forth a payment schedule for the purchase of a P twenty-five, seven hundred megahertz public safety radio system that will greatly enhance our communications and interoperability for uh public safety, fire, police, schools, school buses, uh, and everybody that wants to join on.